Board of Commissioners, can we have a roll call? Chairwoman, I forgot it right.
Commissioner Chris.
Commissioner McQuaid.
Commissioner Yoprow.
Lauren Sallie, Assistant Director, LHA.
Tim Hall, Assistant City Attorney.
Kendra Daniels, County Superintendent.
Sarah, Public Safety.
Molly O'Donnell, Housing Director.
Commissioner Elvin Fairing.
Commissioner Barton.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any?
Oh, Harold, introduce yourself.
Interim Director, Director of Harold Demings.
Does Erica need to introduce herself?
Yeah.
Erica, I'm the executive assistant.
Thank you, Erica. Anybody else? No, we're good. Do we have any agenda revisions, submissions of documents? Can I have a motion to approve the March 21st, 2024 minutes?
I move you through the March 21st, 2024 minutes.
Second.
It's been moved by Council Commissioner McQuaid and by Commissioner Elvin Fairing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, that passes unanimously. We're now public invited to be heard, and you have three minutes per speaker. There's no sign up list, so Shaquille was the first one I saw into the room.
Strider was here before I was.
Oh, Strider.
I feel a little unprepared. I just got this material two hours ago.
Oh, my goodness.
From Bill Van Dusen, from the San Sussi House in Trailer Park in South Boulder, 2018. But anyway, the basic thing is, I don't know if it's a new management or they just started acting that way, but ten to five months ago, and everything has been so attacking us that it's hard to know when and what and what transpired. But all of a sudden, they started attacking almost all of the trailer park owners. I got this note on my door after I was at church one night. I come home and said, "I have not paid my rent." They already had my rent for two days, and they never acknowledged to me that they had already cashed my money order, but they did tell Susan when we had the mediation meeting. The mediation was, there's a young girl local, she didn't know anything. She'd just been trained to be abusive. And there's a regional lady who was, just, everything is absolute arbitrary, has nothing to do with, you know, health, safety, decency, anything like that. It's a violation of what we have been living under. I've been there for 15 years, some for 20 or more years. And everybody gets these threatening notices on their door every week. It's arbitrary, it's not clear. Like, one example, it says, "You cannot have a clothesline." Well, the trailer park put in the clotheslines, you know? And you cannot hang up clothes, you know, to dry. Well, trailers aren't big enough to have a dryer, so. And many of those things, you, it says, "I cannot have a filing cabinet." It was nothing in the words, but they say filing cabinet counts. They call it internal furniture. Well, you can't even see it. It's about like this. You can't even see it unless you're standing right in front of it, looking at it. And they said, "Well, I got, I got two small tables in case friends," or, I mean, I'm a writer. I like to sit out in the sun and have access to my material. And, for example, the, this one, you cannot have this one, you know? And it's totally arbitrary, it's absolute. There is no mediation, no consideration, no acknowledgement. I had cleaned out 95 percent. I had quite a bit of stuff there because my church squeezed my bigger storage locker into my smaller one and everything else got stuffed there. So I got rid of that, 95 percent of it. Stan had some stuff at my place. He got his stuff out. I bought, I had to buy another trailer park storage locker. And at one point, the example, just one quickie. The regional manager said, "Well, you could have a lattice." But then in the same sentence, she made it into life. "You can have a lattice, but you can't have the tarp to protect against the wind and the snow." So you have to tear that out anyway. And it's just, everything is arbitrary, absolute, and different from the last 15 years. All of a sudden, it's a whole new set.
So are you still working with Susan Spalding on this?
Well, I'm willing to, but I want to work with LHA. And Bill Van Dusen just told me that we have rights under the law that I need to learn about.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Strider.
Thank you much. I have nowhere to go, and I'm in Section 8, so I like as expected.
Shaquille Delaw, 21st and Francis Street. I just want to mention that the clothesline prohibitions that Strider was complaining about, those are actually quite common in HOA neighborhoods throughout the city of Longmont. So this is a thing that actually affects many people in the city of Longmont. And this is an extremely unfortunate example. So just food for thought. So Commissioners who also happen to be Mayor and members of council, in partnership with Prosper Longmont and Longmont Public Media, Launch Longmont Housing is kicking off a book club to bring members of the community together to talk about the rising cost of housing in Longmont and potential solutions to that problem. The first book that we are reading is called Escaping the Housing Trap by Charles Moron and Daniel Harridge's of the nationally recognized organization Strong Towns. The book describes the tension between the financialization of housing and the need for housing as shelter and the actions that municipalities can take to address the crisis of housing affordability. We invite you and any member of the public to join us in reading the book and having a conversation about what we can do as a community. For more information and to sign up for the book club, go to launchlongmonthousing.org. Our first meeting requires no reading and is on Monday, April 22nd, at 6:30 PM at Longmont Public Media. We'll have a presentation with all the information you need to get the most out of reading the book. And also, we'll include a presentation by Elizabeth Bodewyn, the curator of history at the Longmont Museum. We've placed this event on the council calendar in compliance with the Colorado Open Records Act. And Launch Longmont Housing has purchased a copy of the book for each one of you. We'll have them at the next council meeting, because the book's not out yet. It'll come out next Tuesday. Members of the public can preorder the book at Barbwire Books or place a hold on a copy at the Longmont Public Library. Thank you.
Thank you, Shaquille.
Before we accept gifts, we have to know what the price is.
Yeah.
I believe the book retails at $28.
Okay, next.
Well, I was going to mention Strider's situation. What it is, is you got little tierities, HOAs. And we got this situation where corporations buying up trailer parks because they figured out that they could buy them up, and they got trapped people. And they raised the rents a lot. Sometimes they try to intimidate everybody, that they start enforcing rules to try to make it pristine, so they can basically resell the place. So what it is, is the city, I think, really needs to, you know, adapt some of the state requirements, so stuff can be enforced on a local level by the code people. Because trying to get enforcement through the state is a difficult process. If it's local, and the other thing is, a lot of these HOAs and trailer parks, what they're doing is they're trying to keep, you know, minorities and marginal people, basically exclude them from housing. Things like restricting parking on the street. You can't park in your own driveway. A lot of the stuff, the city, I think, needs to enact basic rights to people because essentially, the state law has something. If you're just an irritating person, a lot of times you'll get forced out of your community. Now, the state law says, if they're doing something like that, it's a violation. The city really needs to make things like that part of their local ordinances. So a code inspector can actually enforce some of this stuff instead of trying to get some overtaxed state person to do it. And things like when people are trying to rent a place, banning, you know, you got landlords taking deposits from people, not deposits, but just to apply for a place, they're charging like $300 or $400 just to apply. And then they don't want to give it back if you don't get the place. The city makes, needs to establish, you know, there's actually the HUD regulations saying that's illegal. But trying to get a federal thing enforced is almost impossible. You have to file a federal lawsuit against the landlord that didn't give you back your $100. Or, a lot of times, it's more, $200 or $300. And most people don't know about it. But if there are local rules that make it safe for people to rent, make it so people aren't being excluded through things like, "Oh, you can't park on your own street."
Okay. Thank you very much.
Seeing no one else, I'm going to close the public hearing. The public might be heard. Oh, the new business, the Swedish land condos. All right, so you'll be seeing, Molly O'Donnell will be reporting on this one. You'll be seeing an item, most likely at next month's LHA board meeting, requesting authorization to execute an easement for the Dry Creek Trail that the city side Parks Department is working on designing right now and hoping to begin construction on shortly. Let me zoom, since this is pretty tiny. So what you see here is going to show that, but that is being drafted right now. That easement is being drafted right now. So that is not yet totally in effect. But it's a little bit challenging to see, but the proposed trail alignment is here in the thatched orange. And the trail easement would be this green line, the blue line you can ignore. So the reason we're talking about this tonight, however, is that we do have an option agreement to allow Element Properties, the same developer that did Zinnia, to develop this backlot behind the suites. So there's some history in that, that Harold might jump into, because he was involved at the time. This was a little before my time. But when LHA was trying to build Fall River, they needed extra cash on hand to help close the deal. And so they approached the city and said, "Would you buy out half of the land behind the suites, just a paper exercise, not necessarily including the lot itself, to be in the ownership structure of that land so that we could get some funds to help finish the Fall River project?" And council at that time agreed, the property acquisition occurred. And so now the city and the LHA own this backlot behind the suites 50/50. As part of the Zinnia, when we're working with Element on Zinnia back in, gosh, maybe 2019, when they were first getting started, the option agreement was for the area where Zinnia is now, plus this backlot. And so that was the phase one of the option agreement, and this area is the phase two. We were reviewing that option agreement when we were considering this easement to see if it would trigger an amendment of any sort, and it does not. It would just require consent from Element to be able to construct that easement. But it did make us start talking to Zinnia, Element, about what we should be planning for back there. Because the option agreement requires that Element obtain a Lytech award by the end of 2025 for this option to still be in effect. So in order to do that, they need to start getting moving in order to hold the option as is. And so we just wanted to conceptually talk about what the LHA board would like to see in terms of a product back there. So we've worked, in working on this easement, we worked with Element to do kind of a conceptual plan, very conceptual here, about, just to see what could fit back there and if it could fit within and still accommodate the trail, the trail easement. And knowing that there's a riparian setback there, and the FEMA flood plane is mapped here as well, just to see what was possible on that backlot. So this is, what you see here is a conceptual building, housing 63 units. You can see, this is a drive aisle and potential parking areas still, and meeting the pocket park requirements that are assumed to be, that would have to go into site planning. But really, what it looks like right now is certainly feasible 63-unit building.
How many stories?
I'm sorry?
How many stories?
So Zinnia is four stories, podium with wood on top, so I would assume it'd be the same there, similar. So we just, we brought this to the advisory board here last week just to say, if you wanted to make any recommendations to the board, start thinking about it. They asked for an outline of some options to consider, and so that has not come to fruition yet. But we really wanted to start the conversation with the board. And then, we don't need to take any action tonight, but it's more brainstorming ideas to eventually give some real direction to Element on what we all would like to see.
So wasn't this the property that when we had you and Harold and I talked about the Dolores Project?
Yep.
That I personally would really want to see that. So very similar to the Dolores Project.
So for the rest of the board members that weren't on that tour about a year and a half ago or so?
Yeah, yeah, I was there.
So we went down to Denver, where they have an affordable housing development that has a 45-bed shelter for women and transgender people, and then permanent supportive housing units attached to traditional affordable housing. And so people could, the idea was to show hope and move people along and transition them up and out. And so that was a super interesting idea. I totally agree. The one challenge that we've come up with since then is that they got that shelter, Element paid for by the tax credits because it was in a QCT. This site is not in a QCT, so the tax credits couldn't pay for the shelter. But, so there would have to be another funding element attached to be able to do it that way. So that was the one piece of information we figured out.
Commissioner Barton. First of all, what's a QCT? And second, do we have enough, like, first floor housing for mobility-challenged residents? Because that comes up every so often, and it seems like designing it in the beginning would be a good thing. Qualified census tract?
Yes, it's a qualified census tract. So HUD designates qualified census tracts each year. And Lytech projects in qualified census tracts essentially get, they, it's kind of a bonus on the credits. So they could attach, for example, if the ascent was in a qualified census tract, the ECE could be covered by the tax credits, because it's a service for the residents, but it's also more for the broader community. In this case, if it was in a qualified census tract, the tax credits would pay for the majority of a shelter or services or some sort of service-oriented element of the project. And then, the second question on mobility units. We have, we are actually, LHA, when you consider the entire portfolio, is exceeding the minimum required for mobility units when you consider it all together. That's why in Aspen Meadows, when we did the construction project, we actually added extra mobility units to make sure that the entire portfolio was covered. So we are meeting the requirements, I'd say.
Okay. The reason that I ask is because people living in non-LHA properties on vouchers frequently seem to be claiming mobility limitations. And then they get a bad neighbor, and they can't move around inside the building that they have a lease for because of accessibility of the unit that they're in, and they're in, like, the only one or something. So that's the reason I ask, because people can't get away from an odious living situation right now.
So a couple of things that we've talked about, the kind of, it's a framework on the qualified census tract. It's inherently the same issue that we are dealing with with the ascent project. So, you know, when we were looking at the early childcare component, had the ascent project been in a qualified census tract? We could have put that into the basis of the project. It wasn't. So we're having to look at other fun options for that piece in early childcare in that facility. One difference in this location, while it's not in a qualified census tract, it is in an enterprise zone. So one of the things that we can do is really dig in and potentially pre-certify with the state as part of an enterprise zone. And that may be able to do something similar that you would see in a qualified census tract. But we'll need to dig into that a little bit more.
Harold, did you mention something that I didn't quite understand it? That Michael Block from Boulder Shelter had mentioned something about wraparound services. Can you explain that?
Well, I think, when we look at the area and we look at what options we have, I think one of the concerns that has been brought forward to Molly is, you know, right now, every unit on the site is permanent supportive housing. And so there is a conversation about watching the density of permanent supportive housing in a single location. And if you think back to the Dolores Project, you know, one of the things they had was, they had the shelter component, they had permanent supportive housing, and then they had what we would consider traditional affordable housing. And that was one of the pieces that Molly and I have talked about is, you know, that's really kind of the missing piece of this site is more of that traditional affordable housing that we built. So that could be an option that the board could consider. And, you know, we've thrown out other options in terms of, if you look at a podium-style structure, potentially having space to bring, to lease to service providers who serve members of our community that utilize permanent supportive housing and affordable housing as an option. We talked about utilizing space for some of our services that we have as we're running out of space in this facility. So they're, it could really be a mixed-use concept in terms of ground floor activity, services, and other components to this. But I think what they were communicating to us and Molly correctly found out is really watching how much permanent supportive housing we're allocating in a single location.
Yep.
So would it be possible with a four-story building that part of it is the shelter, part of it is transitional, but could not one floor be traditional housing as people move up and out? Would that take care of some of the concerns, that there wasn't enough traditional housing?
I think the concern is more, how many permanent supportive housing units? So once Zinnia is built, we'll have 138, 55 and 1, 82. And so I think the concern that was coming up is just, was more of a request. Please consider how many high-needs people are going to be on-site and considering how the interactions with each other, or, so, just thinking about having opportunities using that backlot for ways for the existing permanent supportive housing residents to be able to, you know, look towards the future as well. So that could include services, that could include traditional affordable housing. That's more of an extension of the comment, but that is where it was coming from.
Okay. For me, it would round out the idea of a campus-type of solution for people in need. I'm not going to say just unhoused, or, but even if someone is living on their own in their own unit somewhere else, they could still use, hopefully, the wraparound services like addiction help, or is that what we're thinking about as well? Or is it just contained to the suites area of Zinnia? I don't know. This is just a thought process that I'm kind of going through.
Well, it seems like this other concern may weigh more heavily because we don't want to ghettoize any kind of subsidized housing, which means that we, you know, we, I would say that while I really like the idea of wraparound and basic services for street-living people, I've proposed things like that multiple times, but maybe this is not the place for it because we want a more functional group of people living in this situation and providing role models and just not, you know, not lumping all of the people who need a lot of services together. You know, I mean, we don't want to end up with something like, true, I go, right? I was in St. Louis when they blew it up. And we don't want to get there. I would like to see it something more upscale, maybe even a combination of unsubsidized, but, you know, 80% type housing and more income.
Probably with that, just HUD financing and grants and...
So the factors that, I'll say this, the factors that will weigh in regardless. Once we have an actual deal, there will be a market study that will say if that area and the general market in that section of town could support certain percentage of affordability units, so 80% for example. That market study will drive a lot of the decision-making on the investor's side. And so that would be telling. I would say that something that this site has going for it is that we constructed 55 units of permanent supportive housing, permanent supportive housing, with virtually no public negative comment. It is, it is a site that is traditionally, if you're gonna, if it's going to face opposition, then that is often when it's in an established neighborhood or near more single-family residential. So that is something that this site has going for it. So it is, I think it's just something for the board to balance. The concentration argument versus the campus argument. If you do it, do it well with the services, et cetera. I think they're all pieces to, for you all to weigh.
I just want to make note of the fact that out of Sunset Way over here and Parkway, right in this corner, is a very active child care center, which supports these businesses in this area. And so we're talking about density in terms of people who need a lot of support that might be at odds with the child care center being back to forth. I've just seen that on my side of town.
Would you like, do you mind if Sarah spoke that?
Yeah, I don't know. I'm just caught on my side of town happening.
So, I mean, it's been there for quite some time. And as far as issues with residents, and there's a lot of residents. I mean, if you drive in there, you're constantly seeing them go to the gas station, walking around. We have not had any issue, I mean, I'd have to look it up, maybe one or two. Very minimal issue with the residents that are currently living there. Now, Brandon, you're correct, it's going to be more dense. But if we look at the data that we have, I don't think that we could support that it would be an issue. Um, there could be an offshoot of a problem, right? It always happens, but what we're, what we've seen in the past doesn't, doesn't indicate that we will. And when we do have a problem, um, folks in the suites are very apt, they're apt to contact me or public safety police if there's an issue, same with the daycare center. They, they're, they're very willing to call us.
Yeah, I'm glad what Sarah, I'm sorry, what I want Sarah saying, I think, you know, one of the reasons that we actually have a security contract on-site at the suites is probably more about the people that are residents in the suites that are impacting the livability of the residents in terms of some of the issues that we're seeing. Um, you know, I think we're in a better spot with our residents because, uh, the last time I was at a coffee conversation, at coffee conversations with Sarah, they were telling, she needed to look for this problem here and this problem here and this problem here. So, and it's interesting, we're seeing that external influence into the suites that, um, I think in some cases actually challenges the residents that live there.
And to add to that, with this additional construction and creating more density, um, we've seen that, if the trend is a lot of our own households are, are looking for private property. They know that it's taking longer for them to be moved along. So, we have had issues up, up along this ditch right here on the north side, significant. They're gone now, but it took us a long time to do all the work to move them along. So, with, with more, more people in there, I don't see the issue of the, I'm not saying they'll, they'll be totally gone, I don't see them visiting that area as often.
We have up on Collier and Twenty-first, a childcare center. There was even a stabbing there years ago, happened right outside that. And, and yet the childcare center persisted, but as soon as the people on North Longmont, um, the businesses there started having trouble with, um, people breaking into their garbage. There was a lot of traffic pretty much up Twenty-first and, um, you know, the impoundments along the railroad tracks there. I think it's a perception problem, but then parents don't know that their kids are, and now that childcare center has closed.
That's had most of them.
Well, we've lost it in our neighborhood, you know? And so, this one is very active and it supports those businesses in the area. And so, you know, on the positive side, we have affordable housing there, then they have a lot of, um, access to that, and so it's very close because it is, um, industrial, there's lots of work you can walk to, and then childcare would be right there too. I'm just worried about too much density being a problem for parents when they see that dropping of kids on. It's just because of the environment, and we miss that depth of childcare center. And that's one of our goals, is to keep those childcare centers open and provide more than seen.
Are there any other thoughts on what this property should be used for?
Well, Georgette said we need some more, um, what's her name, Georgette, said we need some more buffets.
Oh, yeah.
She's not wrong.
So, because this is city and LHA land, whatever ends up happening would end up coming back to both, but I just wanted to start the conversation, um, and give some ideas to Element. So, if you'd like to express any now to, to have Element look into, or if you'd like us to come back with some options, we could do that too.
Are we looking at a particular demographic?
Yes.
You know, because we have a whole lot of housing aimed at senior residents. We would like, um, to apply some demographic pressure in favor of younger people staying in Longmont or even moving to Longmont if they have jobs here. Um, so would some kind of viva, uh, vivo, whatever it's called, kind of concept of something that is for people aging out of foster care or just, you know, people coming out of, out of their own families and, and starting at an entry-level job and needing, uh, is, is that a possibility? Though, though, such people might be more resilient, um, in terms of acceptance of their neighbors.
I think what that would be is traditional affordable housing, and then when in design, you try and, um, you know, just like we are designing ascent to be family-friendly, we're not going to do a preference necessarily, but, um, that is something that we could do to try and...
Yeah, so like singles and young couples friendly.
For the aesthetic and, et cetera.
So, are, what space are we, Harold, would you just not share?
Oh.
It's not, so, would you hear something in the background?
I'm hearing voices.
Yes. From the great John. So, um, are we looking at the city of Longmont, if, land or area or?
It is one parcel joint who owns jointly, so it's not split up.
It's not split up.
It is this general parcel starting from the, the back.
Okay, so, is that where you have the images of the pocket parks and all that?
That was all conceptual.
Okay, so that kind of confused me then. So, uh...
Yeah, if I could, if I could just, if I could jump into a, when we purchased the property, again, this is before the city was involved in the housing authority, um, they, uh, they needed seven hundred and fifty thousand to close on Fall River. Uh, the city with the permanent housing funds purchased the property with seven hundred and fifty. We took a majority ownership interest in the property and at the time, we negotiated where we have ultimate control on the property in terms of what was developed on it because we didn't have the housing authority. Now, it's a little bit different since we're intertwined with each other.
Yeah.
Uh, but that's a bit of history on that.
So, um, I'm going to just pop in a minute.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Well, I was going to finish what I...
Oh, I'm here, I'm here.
No, 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 I was just asking to kind of, um, well, you know, so something I would like to see is, and I know it'll cost, there's going to be an ongoing cost component to this, is really, I mean, I'm thinking about the life skills, wraparound services, how can we get people who are in these units and even other residents or other individuals or unhoused, um, who, you know, getting folks on a trajectory to be able to live a sustainable life. So, knowing how to pay bills, knowing how to budget, knowing how to find a job and keep a job. So, having some kind of, um, place or a hub that we can tap into, you know, along with city funds and LHA to be able to, to support, uh, ongoing sustainability for residents who are kind of like on that verge of, you know, they don't have those skills to, to keep a job even, like they might find a job and then they can't sustain it. So, you know, we're looking at that sustainability to help people stay in housing and help people stay employed.
Is that it?
Yeah, that's it.
That was wonderful.
It was.
We should applaud. So, um, I liked Marcia's idea about, um, children aging out of foster care. I think that is perfect. But also, uh, Mr. Yarborough mentioned together, um, with, with the kids who are in that program as well. A lot of those, no, I shouldn't say a lot, they might be couch-surfing, uh, individuals as well. So, they do fall under, or could fall under the homeless or unhoused umbrella of people who need housing. Um, just keep that in mind. I don't know where they fall in any kind of paradigm of health or under the LHA requirements to be able to be housed.
Element had actually proposed that as an idea very early on.
Oh, they did?
About youth.
Love it. I think we should look at that. Um, I really like Marcia's idea and I know that it would be nice to have something like that here in Longmont for our youth. And I don't know if any of them even know how to fill out applications for voucher and, um, to be on Section Eight, you know, or, you know, any of that. So, to be able to have a point place to go to, knowing that it's here in Longmont just for them, would be amazing. I didn't even imagine, honestly.
To me, that's part of supportive services. It isn't just supporting mental or physical health, but it's skills.
Skills, yeah, life skills.
Oh.
Oh, there we go.
Any other really good suggestions?
Buffet.
And the buffet would be on the bottom.
Buffet, that's what those kids are doing.
Oreo cookies and all eating stuff. Oh, rooftop.
A rooftop buffet, oh my gosh.
There is this trail over there that used to lead to the China buffet, but I don't think the China buffet is...
Make that building high and if we can shoot our fireworks off it.
I mean, you spike a lot over there.
There's a lot of pavement right now.
Yeah, oh geez. Uh, I think we're getting sloppy.
Yes.
Okay.
We have two more, um...
Yep. We have some more to cover. Thank you for the feedback and Will.
Okay, Annie and Millie's Place partnership update.
All right, I'm going to take that, Lauren Selly. Um, I got this update from Lisa, our, um, regional housing, or regional property manager. Um, so she's been in contact with Annie and Millie's. They hosted a veterinary clinic in partnership with the Street Dog Coalition on January thirtieth, and they had a follow-up clinic with booster shots at the, on the February twenty-sixth at the suites. She said you guys are interested in having Annie and Millie's do more with our residents, not just with LHA residents, but also, um, voucher residents. So, uh, she has been in contact with the organization. Um, they are very interested in doing more, their board is currently working on clarifying their current programs and looking to expand and build partnerships, and there have been discussions to hold annual clinics at the suites, Zinnia and other properties. So, they're seeing how that will work in with their mission. Um, and then also interested in expanding past PSH, but also, you know, people who were on vouchers within the community or are truly at risk of becoming unhoused. Um, they do help cover up costs of veterinary services, especially as they escalate. They will, um, look at the costs and see if they can partner with other, other organizations and vet, veterinarians in Longmont to cover that. Um, and they have some upcoming events. May fifth, they're going to be at Saint John Episcopal in Boulder. They're doing initial vaccinations and general well checks, spay and neuter vouchers. June first at Bethlehem Lutheran here in Longmont to do follow-up needs for May fifth, new, uh, guest initial vaccinations and well checks with more spay and neuter vouchers. And then June twenty-second, um, again at Bethlehem here, Lutheran here in Longmont, um, to follow up from the June first visit and then any additional necessary check of care needed.
Great. I love that being able to sometimes...
So, this was a, a discussion that was brought up at the February twentieth LHA meeting, so this was just a report back based on the information we researched.
Do, do we have a density map of where housing choice vouchers that are not in LHA properties, where, where they are being used? I'm thinking particularly about Countryside Mobile Home Park in the context of Annie and Millie's because there was a veritable population explosion of Chihuahuas there. I'm serious, this is, no, I mean, every, like, you know, so, there are some, there's clearly some puppy milling going on there because, because everybody's got two or three.
Oh, really?
Yeah, it's, yeah. And, I mean, you can't, you can't...
They're the security dogs.
Yeah, well, whatever, there's a lot of them there and they might need care. Um, and, and especially some kind of a low-cost spay and neuter event might be good. I don't know, if it's somebody's side gig, then maybe not, but, um...
So, Annie Swartz, who used to be with Hope, he is, um, involved with them now, and I could connect the two of you to the...
That'd be great. He's involved with, with Countryside or, or with Annie and Millie's?
With Annie and Millie's.
Yeah, sure, I know Annie.
And we do have plans to, um, to, we, we don't have a map showing voucher holders. However, we are in talks with the other housing authorities on getting information to their voucher holders who live in Longmont. So, once we have more information about this, we can just send that to their program people and have them disperse that information. Okay. We don't have a reciprocal agreement to share data about the residents, so we have to rely on them to share that.
Yeah, no, I was just thinking of, you know, if, if it's, as a housing authority, is it worth our time to nudge Annie and Millie's into a direction of a particular neighborhood?
I think targeted outreach is possible.
I think you should contact Becky Doyle and get an app for that.
She's pretty responsive, I mean, I've asked her for weird map layers and she's...
Yeah.
You're just on a roll to match.
Don't be sorry.
Cold, it's the make of your brain.
Wrapped up in a blanket.
I don't know. Um, are there any more comments on Annie and Millie's? And you are done with your update. Thank you, I thought it was very interesting. Um, now, Commissioner Hidalgo Ferrey, you had said that you would make the motion...
Yes.
...for Aspen Meadows Senior Apartments flooring.
Are we, did you want to?
I think Harold, I'd open that item.
Yeah. Uh, so commissioners, um, just a brief background of this, um, Aspen Meadows, uh, Senior Apartments is a property that they, that is in the Longmont Housing Authority portfolio. Um, prior to, um, the city integrating in with the housing authority, uh, the Longmont Housing Authority was, uh, began the re-syndication process, and so as you know now, that's when we go in and we, um, get funds, we essentially refinance the, the properties, so we get funds to make capital improvements to, to that property. Um, that, all the development work and the design work was done prior to, uh, the city getting involved with Aspen Meadows Apartments. Um, right at the point where we started combining in that transition, one of the first things that we undertook was actually having to secure the financing for that project, uh, because the initial investor, uh, fell out and we had to find another investor. So, there was very little in terms of the architectural design, the other work, that was all done ahead of time. Um, went through the process, um, made the improvements to the units, um, and we noticed that there were some issues, um, with, uh, flooring that we've been trying to resolve since late twenty-twenty-two into twenty-twenty-three. Um, staff is requesting the board authorize us to file a lawsuit if needed, um, and take all the legal steps necessary to, uh, preserve our plan.
So, I'd like to make a, a motion to direct staff to continue working on a solution to the flooring issue and take all necessary steps to achieve a solution, including if such action is deemed necessary, initiate legal action to rectify Aspen Meadows Senior Apartments flooring failure.
Seconded. It's been moved by Councilor Commissioner Hidalgo Ferrey to give direction to staff to continue working, uh, with Aspen Meadows Flooring and take legal action if necessary, set moved by Councilor McQuaid. All those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That passes unanimously, uh, six to nothing with Commissioner Aaron Rodriguez absent. We're on the interim executive director's report.
Sorry, first off, I'm going to need the commission for indulging me tonight and letting me connect remotely. Um, I got something for my son who got something at CFU, so, uh, didn't want to risk getting a lawsuit as well, so thank you for allowing me to do that tonight.
Thank you.
Uh, I, I'm going to turn it over to Molly to go over the development updates.
Sure. Um, so we are in construction at Village Place, Village on Main, The Village, to keep it simple, still trading my own brain. Um, we have our, we've done two wings now, one on each side of the first floor, and we've got residents moving back in. Generally, the feedback is very good about workmanship and materials, um, and then, but no construction job is perfect, so we are happy, I mean, because people are living in it... So we are happy, as people are living in it now, construction is starting into the common areas. It's going to be more disruptive. So we're really trying to engage with the residents right now, work through requests and questions as they come, and just trying to keep everybody in good communication right now because we are about to peak on construction on the inside. The common areas will be worked on from now through the end of June or so. Construction work outside in the parking lot and on the exterior facade will be June through August. So we're about to hit that peak. So trying to work with residents to get everyone ready. Otherwise, things are going good, on schedule, on budget, yeah. So that is, that property, Zenia's construction is also moving right along on schedule. They will be completing in September with lease-up happening in October. We've been preparing with the entire team, including Element and Boulder Shelter and Mental Health Partners to prepare for lease-up and use any lessons learned that that team went through on Bluebird Boulder, the sister project to this one, to implement any of those lessons learned since that's so fresh there. So what do we have else? Ascent, we are rolling right along to an anticipated closing on Ascent in July and then turn around and start construction at that time as well. So you'll see a good amount of items coming forward to prepare for that closing between now and July in the next couple of meetings, getting everything worked out there. In terms of the Early Childhood Education Center, we have promising news from Colorado Health Foundation. We do not have an actual dollar value yet, but it's just going through final tweaks of milestone and things that they want to see kind of deeper in the agreement that would be coming. So as soon as we have that good news, we'll share it. And otherwise, just a full court rest on Ascent. We've got development opportunities coming at us that we're waiting through to see how to prioritize things, work on our projection of when we need to time certain projects through the next several years, and so that's all underway. Is there any other properties, Harold, that you wanted to touch based on that I didn't hit?
Yeah, one thing that I wanted to talk about that we, unfortunately, I can't get into very specific detail now, but it is likely that we're going to need another executive session of commissioners to talk about a potential development opportunity and get direction to negotiators. This project is a little different in that it's affordable housing, but it's also potentially income-qualified attainable housing in the rental side. Molly and I have had a handful of meetings and discussing different financing options. I'm bringing this up today because we had a really good meeting today that brought some clarity on how we're going to, how we can finance a project like this. And so just adding to what she's saying, development opportunities are continuing to come in. We're continuing to evaluate those. We do have the ability now to be, really look for those who can maximize our revenue potential and how that applies in the future. So we'll probably need an executive session in May with the board to talk through some of these issues. That's really the big one for me. Well, when we look at this, I remember a few years ago, before we started building projects, as the city council and as the Housing Authority Board, you all set a target for us on projects in terms of the number of units that you wanted built. And I believe that number was six units.
Six properties.
Six properties in five years. And to just recap what you've seen, so Christmas 2 was the first one. That's leasing up right now as we speak. Zenia will be leasing up this year. We're going into construction on Ascent. Molly, am I forgetting?
Well, we originally included.
Yeah, project, the project that you all approved as the city council related to ownership opportunities is number four. Just wanted you to know. And that's equating to how many units, Molly?
Oh, gosh, I got to pull it. It was something.
A lot.
I know, over 300.
Over 300 units in that timeframe. I wanted to say that to you because I think the vision that you all set for us in terms of what we needed to do to, you know, one of your major points of housing, you know, you're really now seeing that start to move out of the system. So the work that you did in that goal-setting session has really allowed us to see where our story is. Not really development-related, but I did want to take this opportunity as part of the director's report to say you've also made a number of decisions that it's really kind of, it's really shifted the organization in a way that is making us better. But I think in terms of staff capacity has helped us a lot. And if you look at, if you look in the room and you look at budget decisions that you've made that has drastically helped us. I can start with the one with Tim Hope and really bringing in a housing attorney to work with us. It's definitely streamlined the process and made my life easier. Can look at Sarah and the work of funding the police officers. So Sarah works with us dealing with the safety issues. And then obviously with Kendra and the county and the work that we've been able to do and Molly, and the most recent addition is Lauren. And I will tell you, when you said that, you actually said that as a goal for me as part of my city manager evaluation a few months ago that said you need an assistant director in this world. And I appreciate that because that's what it's for. And I can tell you what I've seen since Lauren's joined our team is it's just another critical piece in taking this organization to the next level. And we talked about this a lot. This is a we and this is a team of commissioners and staff. And I really wanted to take this opportunity to thank you because what Molly and I have realized out of this is when you get the right people and you bring them that support, it's actually brought some calm to us as well and let us look further out in the future. And so, you know, not to set extremely high expectations, but, you know, the folks in this room are just killing it. And when you bring the right people together, you can do some pretty amazing things. And when you have the right team, including the commissioners, I think it just sets a different trajectory for us, so I wanted to say thank you.
So you all cannot leave. In your position.
That's right.
I wanted to compliment you from our last meeting that when we got a chance to actually be on location and I think Harold said that maybe we'd be doing that a little bit more often. And I'd like to see that because I think it's great to see these things, you know, up front.
Yeah.
Enjoyed that as well.
Yeah, I agree. Not at 8 o'clock at night, though. Just saying.
So I want to say right back to you, Harold, that I am so impressed with the team you've put together because it's fun working with them. I mean, they're fun people. I think that that's a huge part of a team, is that you've got to enjoy what you're doing. You have to like who you're working with and be able to voice your opinion, whether it's an opinion that everybody agrees with or not. And I think that's what I've noticed and I'm really appreciative of that because you can't move forward and if you can't work together and just respect each other's viewpoints and come to a conclusion that actually moves you toward the target you're trying to get to. So I think that the team you put together is amazing. And so, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. They're not shy. They're not coming in that room with you that's shy.
Doesn't seem like we are either, so. That's good.
So if it's okay with you, we'll move to the operational update. Sarah, do you have anything on public health and safety?
I do, if you'd like me to go.
Yes, please.
All right. So we've added two new meth detectors, two, one's at Village on Main in a non-construction area. And the other one is at the Suites. We picked those locations for signal strength, so that was the real detriment of the first few devices that we had were signal strength. So those are, I'm monitoring those daily. And we also have the one up at Paul River. So keeping tabs on that, we're looking at getting a quote to get some for Christmas 2 on the units that have not been rented. Also asking, you know, keep asking the questions where they are with their SIM card, where they are with their technology to kind of mesh with what we're doing here in Longmont. Another piece about meth recently, Heidi and I believe were the directors of Public Health with the county have put together a meth task force with the county. They asked myself and Molly to be on that task force. And as you know, it's a very complex topic and there's a lot of challenges and impacts of use and especially when it is regarding to our housing industry. So I think due to our lens and our expertise and some of the things that we've seen and have experienced, we're going to be sitting at that table and we're really going to be having conversations regarding, you know, what to do, how to move forward. Do we contact the state regarding lowering some levels to make, to make things more feasible, et cetera? So once we have more information on that, we'll bring it to you. And I know that, on a side note, but this involves you all, is that the whole meth, the meth information just in general that you had asked about, we met today with Molly a little bit and Grant and Dane and Jeremy, and we're going to be putting a presentation for you together on that. So I'll let the other folks talk about when that's going to happen, but just look forward to that. Cameras, I think Harold informed you that he put a VDA for two weeks out to get this more, this ball rolling?
He's shaking his head back there.
No?
Well, no, I didn't inform them. I pushed the people to.
That's what I meant. He pushed the folks to get the VDA out. So that is exciting for us, especially at coffee and conversations. That's a constant question for our residents about cameras. What's the scoop? Very exciting that that's moving forward. And the next slide will be working very intricately with that whole system setup for cell signal, especially at Paul River in spring break. Like I said, coffee and conversations have gone very well lately and people seem to be, you know, a lot of the same issues keep coming up. And I think staff's doing, like, for instance, like a maintenance piece, but I think staff's doing a very good job, especially being, you know, we lost some folks. We're trying to hire some folks, so I think we're doing our best to keep up and keeping the peace with everyone.
I noticed that coffee and conversations is posted on the next slide. I don't know who's doing that.
I'm going next door.
I'm sorry, next door. This is a next door. Also, I think it's holding people to their commitments to attend, but I thought that was pretty cool. I don't know who's doing it. Do you know who's doing it?
I don't.
I think it's probably people on the property. And so the property managers do a monthly, or I'll let Lauren, she knows more about it, but I like, I tend to quarterly and meet with them. On the camera piece that Sarah talked about, this has become my numbing work. And it's not the cameras, it's the procurement process. So overall, from the, from the system standpoint, because, you know, we're taking more of a systems approach to this. We're bringing in general fund, which is the easiest, but we're bringing in CBG funds and bringing in ARPA funds. And those two have created a nightmare in the procurement process based on the rules and late clarifications from the Treasury Department. Actually, believe it or not, CBG funds are easier than the ARPA funds when it comes to this type of work because the Treasury guidance is a challenge. So, but we think we've threaded the needle and we're moving forward on that.
So Sarah. Okay, go ahead. Go ahead.
Sarah, do you have anything else?
I don't. I still have a question.
Oh, go ahead.
Okay, I know that the meth detectors haven't been in very long at all, but have you noticed any difference that they're in? Have you, like, any of the units or anyone entering the building that has meth on them or been skunking it or?
So we have not placed them in any units that are occupied. The only units that we've had them in are unoccupied and had tested positive. Those were the units, unfortunately, that were having issues with battery, signal strength, and we weren't getting, we weren't getting the information that you're needing. The new platform that they've designed have not had battery issues. We're getting some indications and we're trying to follow that. Is it ventilation through the hallway? You know, we can see some of the cameras if someone walked through and we're trying to pinpoint that with the data is exactly for a time and date. So have you seen a few things? Yes, but nothing to, I mean, nothing to really press moving, like, this is all just information gathering at this point, what we're going to do with the information, right? And working with Property Craft, and that's another piece that now that lease is back, we're following up with that company that gave a presentation to us that does, I know Harold talked to you a little bit about it, and I think we did last time, but they offer a different type of evaluation and it's not as costly. So working with those folks if we do find anything. So, yeah, it's kind of a work in progress.
Okay, I just want to make sure those meth detectors are working.
They are, we're getting, we're getting a lot of inquiries about them.
Okay, good.
So the battery issue, we knew they worked. It was the battery issue that we couldn't seem to figure out. Now that we're getting clarity, I mean, the batteries are lasting now. And so we're ordering, Eric is going to order 20th. I'm using my contingency fund for that. And that's going to be a combination both of the Housing Authority properties and some city rescue facilities. So it's sort of the next level of testing. I have had conversations, to Sarah's point, with the ownership group that we partnered with on Christmas 2. And Sarah's getting information so we can present it to them in terms of acquiring the meth detectors to put into the non-leased units. That's important for us because the deal that we struck with MGL on that property is that in seven years, we're going to take ownership essentially of both Christmas 1 and Christmas 2. And so the more we can do to protect that property for that transition, the better for us. And that was actually one of the first deals that we did.
Great, thank you for that. So is that it? I mean, that was all, you have on your agenda, Harold, did you want anything else?
Operational update from Lauren really quick.
Okay.
So we have some vacancies at a lot of our units. A handful of meth units, some, as you know, have been down for a long time given the amount of work that's going to go into them and lack of insurance that we have now. But there are a few that are being cleaned or in process, getting ready to rent, so we're seeing more turnover of those units and re-leasing those. And I just wanted to say, as far as like an operational standpoint with staff, you know, coming on at this time and sort of getting my feet under me and getting a handle on things, it's been really eye-opening and great. I'm not moving as fast on things as I would like to, but really excited for the future and what's going to be coming. The other thing that I wanted to say was to give kudos to our Housing Choice voucher team, Aquila and Shelby. They just had an audit last week and got zero findings, which is wonderful. Their files were perfect, that was really exciting. And then also since our last meeting, when you guys first met me, we looked. we have promoted Patrick, one of our maintenance technicians, to the supervisor position. And that created the maintenance vacancy that Sarah was mentioning. And we are actively recruiting and getting ready to interview for that position. We've opened it up not just for a tech one, but a tech two so that we can hopefully get some more skill sets in and have a lot of future planning. So we have one technician who has HVAC skills and certifications, which is really important, for cost savings to LHA. And so we're looking to fill, you know, future planning, more skills and certifications to sort of keep that, to keep that going and really create a pipeline and career progression for staff. So yeah, that's kind of what's going on with our properties. We've been getting through a lot. It's just gonna be a work in progress for a while, for me, as I get used to everything and everyone. Yeah, we're seeing good results. Do you guys have any specific questions?
Do we have any questions?
Yeah, if I could add a quick, some of the things that Lauren's already doing, these are things we didn't have time to really dig into. But, so one of the first moves that she suggested that Molly and I were thinking is we actually moved maintenance to Lauren. So, Lauren has direct supervision over maintenance and so we bifurcated the property managers and the maintenance group. And I've had a chance to meet with Lauren and Patrick and really setting down expectations about, you know, operational reports, what you're doing and empowering them to really get that information because that data is gonna be really important to us as we assess what our operational capability is and really seeing what we can get done on a daily basis and setting benchmarks in terms of unit turns and things like that, Molly, to it. So, part of why she's a bit overwhelmed is we didn't plan on doing this. And we did, but we did, based on her recommendation. And then digging into things like we're dealing with reports right now and really, her ability to dig in and give us the information, I think lets us assess in a different way versus getting caught in the weeds. And so that's really the operational capability that we're gaining out of this. Would you agree, Molly?
Absolutely. The intent was to, okay, let's dip our toes in and move from bit to bit of the areas of work that need attention, but Lauren's style is a little bit more jump right in and let's just figure it out right now because you gotta figure out the big stuff and then the rest can start to fall into place easier that way. So, I appreciate it. It's been a lifesaver. Lovely self-care allowed.
I heard from staff across the whole organization that they're seeing a different Molly now. It's like meeting a whole new Molly. She has more capacity to breathe. And so that's really nice.
I said my shoulders were never so relaxed.
And there's, I mean, I have a lot of plans. I have a lot of goals on, you know, streamlining operations where we can to gather more data because it's hard to make budget decisions going forward for not only new projects that we're planning and budgeting for for operational, but just for the organization as a whole. And so we really need that data in order to make those requests. And so, it's gonna take a while, but I'm hopeful and we have a great team. So I'm not worried. It's just a matter of getting...
The other thing that we did, bringing this team together, is really the next phase of the work that we have to do. We brought in psychologists that I've worked with for twenty years almost now. And we really focused on individual communication training. So, everyone went through and took a DISC assessment, which basically is the first look at how you approach the world and how you communicate. What I really like about this DISC assessment, it also tells you how you communicate under stress and really getting everybody to understand each other's perspectives and how we work. What was interesting is we found some very distinct things that we needed to deal with because almost everyone fell in a similar section of this. And part of the characteristics that we learned is we all, they like, they hold things in. I'm not that.
That's true.
And so, really working and empowering people to not do that, that was a piece of it. The second piece of it was really what we call the print report. And without going into too much details, what it really does is, again, it looks at how you approach the world and what your best self is and what your shadow self is and how you react in certain situations. This is a test they're actually starting to use on public safety departments because what it's starting to identify, what are your triggers as an individual and how do you respond to certain things so that we can train and teach people to avoid the triggers? We spent about two days doing that work with the team in different components and how they work with each other than as a broader group. And that's really been setting the stage for us in terms of communication and how we go forward. We're gonna do some more training on this and really get into things like resiliency and self-care and things like that because the stress is significant. But I wanted you to know that because I did that with this group. I also did it with my leadership team on the city side. But we're gonna start working more on this as we get down the road because part of a good team is good communication. And every time I've been through an after-action review on any issue, communication is number one. And so this is really getting us to the point where we understand each other. So when Molly says something that triggers me, I know it's a trigger and I don't fall into that trap. Although she doesn't...
Happens all the time.
It's really understanding of, or when I communicate to them because I'm one of the few Ds or as strong as Ds in the group. And so, I can trigger them based on how I communicate. And it's helping me adapt to their styles so that we're a stronger unit. So, that's the last piece of the operational report. But I just wanted you to know that not only are we working on the technical and the tangible, we're working on the teamwork side of this as well.
Sounds great.
It looks like our shadow self.
I think that's a good idea for all of council too.
Well, we did that a year ago.
Yeah, we did.
But we didn't do this, I mean, it was similar, but theirs, we didn't talk about no shadows. No, theirs is a little bit...
I will share my view all, and if council's interested in it, I talked to a couple of you because you came in after I did it. It's really insightful. And what I will say personally, it's actually helped me at home, as much as it is anywhere else because a lot of, I can contain myself pretty well at work, but at home is when my shadow self tends to show itself. And it's actually helped me catch things. And so, as a board or a council, if you're interested in doing this, we'd be happy to talk to you all about it.
Okay, great. Thanks for offering that up. So, is that the end of the reports?
That is the...
Can I have a motion to...
Actually, I have one other.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Mr. Holt, did you need an additional motion from us to protect all of our rights in regards to this, our legal rights?
That part was a motion.
All right. So can I have a motion to adjourn?
I will adjourn.
Second.
And then by, which is recorded in time for Christmas. That we adjourn, although some papers say I... Bye, everyone!